It's nice to bring you some.
Let's go.
All right, I got six o'clock. Thank you everybody for being here tonight. We're gonna go ahead and open up the work session. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Vance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, Mrs. Button will be coming in a few minutes later. She doesn't meet the teacher tonight. So, a couple of things tonight. I want, I appreciate you being here. I wanted this meeting for a couple of reasons. Number one, Dr. Sharp, kind of her, get started with a meeting before the first regular meeting. But at the same time, too, we have some, a couple of important things I wanted to catch you up on. We really have, since January, three new members, and they've, they've heard some of this, but not everything. So, we have a lot of catching up to do, and a lot of just things to discuss and so forth. So, a couple of goals here tonight. Number one, we're here for Mr. Micus for his annual assessment review. And you'll see how he really digs in on this. He's right going over this with the administrative team, but I want you to have all this information as well. So, we'll talk more about that as he goes. And then, after that, we're gonna give you a construction update on our facility projects, and, and then also talk about where we're going further with that. We'll end the night with an executive session after the construction update. So, a lot of things to talk about tonight, a lot of very important things. When we get started, I'll bring Mr. Micus in, and again, for our newest members, Mr. Micus, our Director of Accountability, spends a lot of time just breaking down our data. He digs into it like anyone, like no one I've ever seen before, I will tell you. But really does a lot to help our teachers and our principals and our buildings. He does meetings with them, he goes through a lot of different material, and gives them a lot of suggestions. A lot of times you see test scores, and we've said this before, we see our results, we look at different things, and we say, okay, so what? Well, what's that really mean? What's it, what's our goal? What do we, what, where do we wanna be? So, that's a lot of what we're gonna talk about tonight. I think it's important to remember that, number one, this is ongoing, so everything he's gonna give you tonight isn't everything. But at the same time, it will continue to update you as, as, as time goes on. But at the same time, it's important for you to know what our responses are gonna be. How are we gonna work to keep getting better and improve? So, that's all about what we're gonna dig into here tonight. So, without me going any further, I'll turn it, you do have a handout with this information in it. Also have the PowerPoints, and you can probably see the screen on the back the best, because of the lighting, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Micus and let him get started. It's fine. We can see that one, plus with the handouts.
Well, Dr. Vance, thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here tonight. I always get excited this time, because it's my turn to kinda show what we have done as a district, show our progress, what we do to meet, what we do for the 180 days to show the kids are learning, and continue to respond to that. So, start off with state accountability. So, there's two ways, really, there's a state accountability model and a federal accountability model. And we answer to them. The federal accountability, we've had measures for the last four or five years, since COVID. We haven't had a state accountability model. We've had changes in assessment, we've had some changes statewide, that really, if we made a change to the state accountability model, the state would've had to go back and make two or three different changes before we get to this point. And so, they basically just said, okay, we're gonna hold harmless until we get to this point. Now, we're at that point where the state has said, okay, we've been held harmless enough, let's put together a state accountability model. And so, we'll talk a little bit about what it used to be. Remember the A to F model? That was, that's the state model. The federal model talks about means expectations, different terminology, but really looks at a lot of the same things. So, if you look at your handout, the first slide there is just kinda, you're breaking it down. This is what we're gonna look at as the Department of Education, the state of Indiana. The four pillars we're trying to look at, the grade intervals that they're seeing. And then, if you go to the last page of your handout, you'll see this is kinda the first draft that the state has released. And on the left, you'll see academic mastery. And as you go down there, you'll see what are they using to assess and measure student understanding. And so, you'll see that you've got your IREDA, your ILEARN, your PSAT, SAT, the credits, okay? Then on the right-hand side are the other measures that they're gonna look at. These are not in stone. These are what they could look at, okay? This is the first draft from the D O E, where we have a very weak framework of what it's gonna look like. The meat and bones of the, of the plan are gonna be released later. Now, not too much later, because this has to be up for legislation in December. So, the first draft is what you see in front of you. The second draft, where they start giving us that, how? You know, how are we gonna measure things? What are we gonna look at to show this at each grade level? How's that gonna impact the score? All of that will start coming out in the next month or so, okay? So, that, you'll see that in the news, that'll be coming out. But that's really what we're looking at, but I wanted you to know that it's still gonna be an A to F model, just, it's gonna be different. Is it perfect? Probably not. But some of the things that it has is where we can look at students and not just be an all or nothing. So, what, what, the way they'll do it is if you think of every student having a checkbox with different, different things, right? From assessment being their academic mastery, what you see on the left side of that sheet, and then some of those, those measures that you see on the right. And then, depending on how many of those measures they accomplish, they'll be awarded points. And then, you'll probably average those points, and then that'll reflect the school's letter grade. Some part of where, where this is coming in and being very helpful, based on the model we have before, it wasn't all or nothing. So, this is an example of a third-grade student who was approaching proficiency in math on Island. Historically, that kid would not have counted towards the school as, as showing any credit at all. However, that student did show progress, so now the state is going to award points for that kid, meaning approaching. So, you have below, approaching, at, and above, as far as your categories for Island. At and above, we're going to categories that actually never received any credit. Now, they're gonna start recognizing those in the tweeters, those kids that are showing growth and maybe not yet on grade-level mastery. And then, they'll tally the points, what those values will look like, how they'll be figured, is part of the meat and bones that we're waiting to see. All right, so some other things that they look at, and this is how they, this is one of the federal report cards, so they're probably, they're probably gonna be very similar in how they calculate model attendance. So, this is not the attendance rate of the school. All of our schools are between ninety-five, ninety-six percent attendance rate, which is probably right at or right above the state average. What this is, is how many students we have in each of our buildings that are, have reached a model attendee status. Now, a model attendee can be accomplished in two different ways. One, if a student is, is present at school for ninety-five percent of the year or more, they can be a model attendee. Or, if they have shown a three percent gain during the year before. So, if we have a third grader that attended school for fifty percent of the time, and then as a fourth grader showed fifty-four percent of the time, that student would be a model attendee because they showed three, over three percent growth in attendance. So, if you look here, the nice thing is, you know, we want it to be a hundred percent all the way, right? All our kids be model attendee. But what's nice is that the last two years, we haven't seen this year yet, last year, because it's in debates, we'll have this in September for twenty-four, twenty-five. But what you can see is from the twenty-two, twenty-three year to twenty-three, twenty-four year, we're seeing increases. So, you can see that our, our students in all, all of our buildings are reaching that model attendance rate from more, from one year to the next. I'm excited to see what last year is, because we have from twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five. We have put in a lot of different interventions and a lot of different things in place at all the buildings that I hope show a difference.
And you said you have that in September, is that what you said?
Usually, that's what the state releases with their report cards, Septemberish. One thing that, that can be looked at down the road is our high school credits. So, if you look at the AP dual credit classes that we have in the high school, here's a six-year breakdown of the number of exams that were taken and the average score. As you can see, last year, we had three hundred and sixty-seven students, or three hundred and sixty-seven exams taken, that's not how many students participated, and the average score of all of those were three. Now, the highest is a five, but most universities accept that three level. And what's interesting with this is, I think, you know, when you look from twenty-four to twenty-five, it's probably going down, you know, with the number of kids participating. And part of that is, though, because we've increased our dual credits. So, like a partnership with Ivy Tech, just last year, we had sixteen AP courses represented here. We have thirty-two dual-credit classes at the high school that can be offered for dual credit. The difference is the AP, the kids take the class, they have to take the test, that tells them what score they get. If they get a two or a one, they may not, they've taken that whole class and not received any college credit. Now, for dual-credit class, they, it's like taking an all camps, and then they, they automatically get credit for it at the end. So, having that partnership with Ivy Tech is probably gonna pay off in the long run as we start to look at accountability.
Mr. Mike, I know this starts like twenty-twenty, the COVID year. Were these numbers different pre-COVID?
This is as far back I can go.
Okay.
So, this is where the cutoff was.
I just wondered if we were getting back to where we were before, or, or?
What's that?
I was wondering if these numbers just reflect getting back to where we were, or they're genuinely increasing.
Because we had like two sixty-five, two fifty-six, then we went up to four eleven, so, yeah. You'd wonder what that trend would be.
Just curious.
Right.
I'll say this, Mr. Micus mentioned, remember, an average of a three is pretty good. AP exams are very difficult, and if we're averaging a three, with taking more exams than we were when that list was started, like Dr. Reese alluded to, that's, that's quite an accomplishment, so that's, that's good for our students.
So, how do we get those points? How do we, what do we do for our, so, we're talking about, we've heard of ILEARN, SAT, PSAT, and all that good stuff. What's the corporation doing in between there? How are we tracking kids and looking at kids and giving them what they need based off their performance? So, it starts in kindergarten. So, we start with kindergarten, middle of the year, and we give an assessment called INCLASS to grades K one and two. INCLASS just kinda says where are they at in level based on how they grade. It's phonetic awareness, letter sounds, naming, those kinds of things. We have a team of about eight educators that go from one building to the next, so we can kinda control that testing environment. You know, if you have, if you test it, we have three different schools, and we tested three different ways, we might get three different results. So, we use the same eight people at each building. Takes about a week, but at least we have a little bit more control in, in how our testing is administered. All the people are trained in the same way, given on the same day usually with those grade levels, so that we can see those results. Something that's really worth noting there, and we'll hit the last one, you know, those are our four categories, the words either, above benchmark, at benchmark, below, well below. And if you look there, if you combine the K one and two grade-level students at the beginning of the year, so, we had about fifty-five percent that were on track to where they should be. By the end of the year, that number went up to seventy-two percent. So, at the end of the year at K two, we had seventy-two percent students meeting their benchmark more than they should be at the end of the year. Now, after each administration, and we give this three times a year, beginning, middle, and end of the year, for one, two. Kindergarten just does it in the middle of the year, because if we tested kindergarten in August, we probably wouldn't see much, it's not worth the time. So, we wait until about October, November, and then that also covers us with our licensed screener, so we can identify those students needing that. But to see seventy-two percent at the end of the year, at the end of the year for our K two combined, is quite impressive.
How long have we been doing that test, the INCLASS one?
Since the dyslexia.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So, the last two years of kindergarten, as I said, our, our kindergarten, we give that middle-of-the-year test in early, end of October, early November. The number that you see on the left here, that, this is two years ago, that shows how many students we had that were at benchmark, that met the middle-of-the-year benchmark. This is the percentage of students that met the end-of-the-year benchmark. Colston, Hendricks, Loper, you can see the results. Look at the change, look at that. To me, this is growth. If we look at the change, we have at Colston forty-five percent of the kids increased from middle-of-the-year into end-of-the-year sixty-two percent that are now where they're supposed to be. Then, if you look at last year, we see great growth as well, consistent growth. If you look to the top one, we've got forty-five, thirty-five, sixty-two across all three buildings. Great measures, but if you look at last year, all three buildings had a fifty percent growth or higher. So, great to see out there in kindergarten, love seeing them at middle. First grade, two years, we see, once again, it's nicer when you see all green, right? You've got kindergarten, we've got first grade, for the last two years showing growth across the board from beginning of the year to the end of the year. The BOY for, for first grade is going to be in mid-August, we try to get that as soon as we can. You know, because that's giving us a, you know, that's, that's, that's a kind of an anchors down, where we're kinda identifying where they're at, and then we try to see how to rise up from there.
I like it. So, you caught that, right?
Yeah.
But it's really kind of that, okay, where are we at, and how do we need to move forward? And teachers' progress monitor throughout the course of the year, so that we can measure this growth. In addition to myself going out with them after every administration, beginning, middle, and end of the year, to kinda see where are we at. We start with the building, the district level, building level, grade level, class level, all the way down to the student. And so, that kinda breaks it down of what student we, and then we discuss what we can even go before. Second grade, we get into some state assessment, we get an IREDA. This is a, a great slide, this is the, last year was the first year that the state required all second graders to take IREDA assessment at second grade. The year before was a pilot, and so, we took advantage of that opportunity to see what it was gonna be like with second grade. And then, what you can see is from last year, from the year, two years ago to last year, all three of our buildings saw an increase in the number of second graders passing the IREDA. Average of the district went up about two percent as well. So, we were about forty-seven percent last year, or two years ago, and then last year, we were at forty-nine percent. So, that means that all forty-nine students, all forty-nine percent of our students are not going to have to pass IREDA as the third grader in order to pass. So, then we get into the third grader. So, this is looking at them as a cohort. This is taking second grade from the year before, combined with the third graders that have now passed it or did not pass it. If you look at our passing rates, Colston State about the same, Hendricks and Loper kinda flipped. Now, these are projected, these are not in stone, because IREDA scores have not been released yet, but this is kind of a forecast of where we think we'll fall. Now, when you look at this, I know there's a lot of hubbub about it, intentions and so forth, that doesn't mean that twenty percent of our third grade is being retained. Okay, there's, they can get good cause, a lot of our students have, those nineteen percent are good cause exemptions, which could be for special ed, ENL, or they were retained twice prior to third grade. So, if a kid was retained in kindergarten and first grade, they would not be retained if they didn't pass the third grade. The exemption changed to where they didn't have to take the test, to now where they have to take the test, they just don't have to be retained. Now, with the, starting this year, students that did not pass will have to continue to take the IREDA all the way through sixth grade. So, that means we might have some sixth graders taking IREDA eventually. All right. Vomar, ILEARN, getting into ILEARN with Language Arts. This compares this to the state over the last three years. Right here, you'll see the district's passing average compared to the state's average. This is where I like to see, okay, how are we growing? And what I like to do is look at the difference between our average and the state's average. And then, from the next year, look at the state's average as a cohort group. Are we getting closer, are we getting closer to where those kids are at across the state? Are we making gains on other schools, or others, other students across the state, or are our kids getting behind a little bit? So, if you look here, you can kinda follow the colors, the corning, but if you look right here, here's the kinda cheat sheet of the difference. So, if you look at students from third grade to fourth grade to fifth grade, we can say this, they were eight percentage points away, then the next year, they were ten percentage points away from the state average, and then eight. So, they kinda went up and down. They were, they were above this, they were only eight point, eight percentage points from passing, or average points of passing, the ILEARN to ten percent not passing, to eight percent difference, okay? So, measuring that difference. What this tells us is if we look here, our kids from third to fourth grade struggle with that transition standards. But we make up for it when they transition from fourth to fifth in Language Arts. So, that means across the district, we make up gains, or our kids make up gains from fourth grade to fifth grade in Language Arts. And then, you kinda see the same thing here from sixth to seventh, from fifth grade to sixth grade, yeah, it's kinda itty right now. We need to see some more data for another year, so I see another cohort group. But when you look at sixth to seventh grade, we make gains on, on the state average, but then we drop again on the eighth a little bit. You kinda start thinking, well, does that go every other year? Is it just built like that? Well, let's go to math. No. Math kinda shows a different story. In some areas, we're above the state average. So, when you see the plus in front of the number, that's how we, we are in front of the state average. So, if you look here, right here to this cohort group, third, fourth, and fifth, they stayed the same. So, they're one percent behind the state average all three years. I would kinda consider that growth, because each year, there's new content. It's a higher level, right? Going from like sixth grade to fifth grade, fourth grade to sixth grade, content gets harder, new material. So, one percent difference across the state of the same is growth. Then, if you look here, you know, if I look at our fifth, our sixth grade, this, that are, that are now eighth graders. So, if we look at that last eighth grader, we were two percent behind the state average. When they were seventh graders, they were five percent, but then when they were sixth grade, they were eight above the state average. So, that means after sixth grade, we lost kids. Kids that were normally passing ILEARN were not passing in seventh and eighth. And so, that's something we have to discuss and look at, because when we look at middle school, math, what's going on? And then, if you just look at it, you can see from sixth, from fifth to sixth, pretty good transition time. Third and fourth, good transition. Sixth to seventh is where we lose them. So, then we, then we bounce back out some of the eighth grade. But right now, we gotta talk about what's going on. Seventh grade's kinda like where, it's always been in the state, a little bit of dip from the state average. That's why you can't just look from one year to the next, one grade level to the next, what the percentage passing is.
Is this one of the reasons why we took away some, we shifted some of the high school classes up from the middle school?
No, not really. This wasn't really part of that conversation.
Yeah, I just agree.
But what that does, here's where, here's where that can support that. By moving those classes up to the high school, you've now created three sections. So, now you can have smaller class sizes, now you can have more intervention opportunities by having those, those periods freed up.
Do we think the, the difference between sixth to seventh is, you know, from third, fourth, fifth, and sixth, it's a lot more structured? Classes, they basically stay in a classroom. Seventh, they become a little more free as a student. Could that be an issue?
There's a transition to in the curriculum, from everyday math to reveal math, even though it's the same company. So, we're looking at that, too, and maybe gonna bring in some people to try and help us, 'cause, you know, bridge that difference. You know, I mean, again, like philosophies and the way that you teach it are a little bit different. So, it could be pieces of that. We've been trying to work on that, but we have more work to do with that.
And seventh grade isn't true middle school kid.
Right.
Right? I mean, that's that transition time. So, I think, you know, that plays a lot into what you said, it's hard to know where they're at, because eighth grade's kinda focused on high school. The seventh grade's kinda like, okay, I'm looking in the middle. All right, so, with our results, always like, okay, where are we at compared to everybody else? I showed you where we're at compared to the state. So, when we look at where we're at compared to everybody else with ILEARN, where are we at? One simple way to look at it is, where, everybody's gonna do this, where are we at in relationship to the county? So, when you look at the county, here's Language Arts and Math, it's sorted by total proficiency in math and Language Arts. The pink is the ELA, blue is the math on the bottom. You can kinda see where, where kinda toward the bottom, not where we wanna be. But, this is kind of an apples to oranges. As close as we are to every school in the county, our demographics are drastically different. If you look here, looking at our demographics, our elementaries, free and reduced lunch, higher than everybody, EL percentage, and then special education percentage, we're pretty close. But when you start getting to enrollment size, EL percentage, and free and reduced, we're drastically different at the elementary level. So, it, it's Language Arts and Math. So, then it's like, okay, well, let's, let's take those variables out. Let's take those variables out and see who's like us and how did they do. So, on this particular model, I think it's important, we can, we can look at Loper and Hendricks together, but I think Colston's a separate entity. When you look at the demographics, you can kinda say that Hendricks and Loper are similar, because the EL percentage and the poll enrollment, Colston, Colston's different. All right, so let's look at Loper and Hendricks, right in the middle. So, if you look at, compared to, these are, these are schools that have, that have reported demographics similar to our, to Loper and Hendricks, and where we figured out in comparison to them, overall Language Arts and Math, Island. So, let's do the same for Colston. If you look at the next page, you see where Colston, that, that is a school that are like Colston, based off their demographics. When you look at it overall, you can kinda say, well, Colston's underperforming compared to the other schools. But when you really compare the apples to apples, where, what other school corporations, other schools look like Colston, they're doing very awes- they're doing awesome, they're doing great. You can see they're very competitive, right where they, right compared above those schools that are very similar to them based off demographics. No two or three schools are the same, but looking at all the schools that have our demographics and our size and our structure, these are the ones that are similar to those schools.
I like how Mr. Micus has done this. I've told you since I've been here, I always like to have a scoreboard that really shows how we're doing. We talk about scores all we want, but then you're gonna say, so what? What's that really mean? Well, this is what it means. And we look at it, especially how he's broken it down in comparison to the demographics, not just by county or by conference, or some of the different other breakdowns we look at. This is a true illustration, in my opinion, of how we're doing. Talk a lot about our goals and where we wanna be and what kind of progress we wanna see. Well, we at least wanna be at the, at the top of these kinds of lists that he's produced for you. So, that's, what he's saying is that's progress. Now, let's get to the top, now let's keep climbing. But I think these are the true scoreboards to show you how we're doing.
So, throughout the year, we, this, last year was the first year that we were able to script that, right?
As, as we do this, I'm trying to sort all this out with an old mind, it's getting tougher. But as we've been doing these comparisons, what we really need to kinda focus on, especially in relationship to what I've heard as I've just recently come back to the board, when we're in competition and we're using these comparisons, we're really in competition for where people move into the, into our school system in this county, not the rest of the state. We're not competing with people who are moving to Jeffersonville or Jefferson, you know? So, we get to use these numbers to make a determination, and then, is that what, what I'm trying to find out, is that's what's driving what, what you then said is where we need to attack, or what we need to address, or those things? Is within this one first, right, not the state?
Well, first of all, we're not saying we're competing with these people. We're, we're showing you where we are. This is true.
I realize that, but actually, we are competing for these people when it comes to the number of students that we're trying to get into our system.
Well, absolutely, but you're right, we're not competing at Evansville. We're not saying that. Our point is, this gives you a true comparison of schools like us, so you understand how we're doing or not doing. That's the point of this. We can, we can pull in anything, any, any, we want to and do that comparison. But this, what we like about this is, this is, these charts show you like schools, so we really say we're doing. For example, there's no, no sense putting Carmel up here. They're not like us. So, I mean, that's our point. That's what we're trying to show you, how we're really doing, not so much this competitive model here. Mr. Mike, is anything, I mean, yeah, anything else you want on that one?
I think, so last year was the first year that the state, kinda you're supposed to pilot the checkpoints. What the checkpoints are, are formative assessments given three times a year for math and Language Arts, the kind that are reflective of the curriculum of math. So, basically, if you look at what's taught first nine weeks, we could assess it, and it would be what was taught first nine weeks. Then we get to this, then we get into the second nine weeks, we could, we could look at our, what was taught during the second nine weeks, give that checkpoint that the state created, and, and see where our kids are at. So, we gave that about three times a year before we got into the summit of ILEARN. ILEARN's kinda like having it all together, checkpoints are breaking it up. So, after we looked at, if we looked at throughout the checkpoints in third grade, this shows we had ninety-five percent of the kids that throughout the course of the year, on our first three checkpoints, were at or above proficient in Language Arts. When you look at kids that were not at or above, we had three and a half percent move up to at and above at summit. Throughout the year, we were pretty, we were pretty even with the, with the state average on checkpoints. What happened between the third, what we gotta figure out is what happened between the third checkpoint and the ILEARN assessment itself, the summit. Because that's where we, that's where the state stayed where they were supposed to stay, and we kinda dropped. So, what happened between the two parts? If we were on track all year, why did we drop there? Math, different story. Hundred percent of the kids that were at or above stayed on track and, and performed at or above on ILEARN. Based off seven percent of those kids that were not at or above, were at or above on the summit of assessment of ILEARN. That says some hard interventions are working. Things that we're doing beyond just throwing the material, teaching the materials to the students, what are those extra, what are we doing extra for those kids that are not showing, that they didn't understand in the first nine weeks? What are we doing, going to go back and reteach? What kind of interventions are we doing? Are they working? That shows that the increase of the kids is probably a part of that. Fourth grade had the same thing. You see where we're at in Language Arts, eighty-five percent, math still a hundred percent. So, so far, the trend in math is three, four, and five. If students were performing at or above throughout the course of the year, they were at and above when they got to the summit of assessment.
So, I have a question. How are you, so, we know this data, but then, what are we? Are they, what are they changing that moves us out of, like, that's kinda what I wanna know. If I, if I know what this is, that's, that's fantastic, but what do we do classroom-wise? Do we have enough time to make those shifts before they're taking these proficiencies that we're really on the hook for, right?
Time is, time is hard to find, right?
Right.
So what we have done is at our elementaries, there's tier time, there's designated time within the day to where the teachers can take the information from the assessment, make their small groups work with individual skills on what those kids need. So I would say daily, weekly, it's, it, that, flexions take place. And in a lot of cases, they're flexible. You know, you may not need help with two-place division all nine weeks. Once you get it, you might be out, but I might have another kid that's starting to show them the help.
Sure.
That flexibility is there, to where they can be kids in and out of that tier time.
Okay.
One thing too, that we have that we didn't have before, and it was year one, was Title I teachers. So we have actual teachers that are pulling, it's not just the instructional assistants. So they're, you know, they're looking at interventions and things when we take these checkpoints, and then they pull those kids in, and they, you know, work with them as well. So that kinda helps.
And with those checkpoints, sometimes there's, we elected to give a version B test, to see if our intervention worked. So like, you, they have, there's two versions of each checkpoint. The state makes the second one optional. So if we gave, let's say, the first nine weeks ended, we gave our assessment, we identified the kids that were struggling and didn't understand what they're, what, what was being tested.
Then you give assessment B over, which is really the flip side of A.
Right.
Got it, okay.
Kind of gives an idea of what we do work.
Okay.
Middle school has the same thing, you can kinda see, this is where you really see the difference in, um, from demographics compared to our county schools, but as you see, we're not where we'd wanna be. But this is where we're at. We're a little bit higher in math. We're not in the, we're not in single digits, but we are still somewhere in the middle in math.
Sorry. So how much impact, just so I understand, how much impact? And how do you track through E-L-O, right? Because if you've had a kid who still is in E-L-O, but let's say has been in the United States in school, in our system since kindergarten, but they're still flagged, right, as an E-L-O student? How much impact, or how much understanding do we have of the gradation in actual levels of E-L-O student? Because if you've been in our system since kindergarten, but you're still labeled as E-L-O, are you really, let's say, changing that, and changing that dip as much now? Like, are you really that much more deficient in English language comprehension, that it really affects those numbers? Does that make sense?
Yep, absolutely does. And so they give, we give a test called WEDA, and that's the language proficiency, uh, that is the W administration. And you see, that's where you, you nailed it. We see the biggest growth of those kids that we had, K, whatever grade you tested, cause it, we test K twelve on WEDA. What you see is the kid that just moved in fourth grade and doesn't speak English.
But they're all still labeled as an E-L-O, until they meet some special WEDA requirement?
Proficiency, like a level five, when they're tested, cause they, they take the WEDA every single year.
Okay.
So that's where those E-L teachers look and put their efforts is, okay, so they scored in these areas of reading, speaking, listening, writing, you know, and then they work with them on those specific skill sets to try and get them proficient in the academic language and the things like that.
Right.
As they go through, so.
So then, okay, this is another, and you may not know the answer to this right off the top of your head, but so how many of our kids are, like, I would love to know how many of our kids are weeding, out, out-weeding, or whatever we, like, how many, what's the percentage of those kids that get out of there? Right. Like, I think that's kind of interesting, and what level are we kind of getting them out?
Yeah, cause we look, and you look at a kid who's at a level three, like, our goal is to get that student to a level four the next year. Easier said than done in some cases.
Right, right.
You know what I mean? But yes, exactly that.
But that's kind of interesting to see how we're doing with that subgroup and getting.
And again, too, I think those of us who have been around long enough, like when we were at the top of the county with our scores, the test was very different, because this is adaptive. So it's not just like, here's the line, and we all need to get over it, and we knew what that line was. If you're a student and you're taking this test, and you keep answering lower level questions incorrectly, you're gonna keep getting lower level questions, and so it's harder and tougher to, you know what I'm saying? Like, get over that bar, because you're gonna stay, and I'm not, he's the numbers guy, but that's what I understand, because having lived through all of that, it's disappointing that we keep, I think to Dennis's point, that you know, we keep, what is it, we can do as a district to try and, you know, influence those scores in a more positive way.
Yeah, I was just curious, cause that has to impact us differently at different times, right?
And that's why the, the demographics are so important, because if you've got Southwestern or whoever, that might not have the same E-L population that we do, and that's where our students are gonna struggle with those higher end, level three, level four types of test items. So I think that's kinda where we're stuck, but making progress, you know, with our students every year.
Please keep in mind, we don't make excuses, but these are all factors.
Right, but it's interesting to think about how that plays into it, and how, you know, potentially, if that's a population where we, where we have more of, but clearly that is a struggle for us, how to, you know, manipulate resources and move those around to address that as a separate issue to help bring our scores up to be more representative of what we're doing.
And back on Mr. Herms' topic a minute ago too, with the, the demographic research we do, that's probably the reason why we do that. We look at who's, who's ahead of us. We wanna know what they're doing that we're not. And so we, we look at those items also. And, and, and along with that too, we do do the conference comparison and area comparison, but the demographic comparison really helps us, because, you know, I've said, I've told this story before in my previous district. I sent a, a team over here to see what, when Mr. Micus was principal, should the middle schools do it? Because I looked at your demographics, and I saw where they were, where they're ranked, and I wanna know more about what should the middle schools do. So we do that all the time too, that kinda helps us, just try to see if we're missing anything.
Yeah. Are there more E-L resources at Colston, or not, because their population's smaller?
We, we try.
Yeah.
Like they have two teachers, you know, instead of one, the other buildings always have like E-L assistants and a teacher, but we do, because their population and size is larger.
Yeah, but that makes sense.
Right.
And I'll, I have a comparison I'll send to you.
Okay.
Kids that we have had in our district there at E-L, and what kind of growth can we see with them over years? Versus the kids that just moved in that year, or ten days before testing.
Right, right.
And so that makes a difference, but you're absolutely right, and we do see that those kids do have a higher, higher percentage of going higher. Um, alright, so middle school, just a little bit there, but so you can see what kinda sticks out when you look at the, how we do compared to the checkpoint. When you look at language arts, seven, our seventh and eighth grade, we had ninety percent of the kids that were at or above on the checkpoints, go on and perform at or above on I-Learn. Sixth grade, only seven percent. Yeah, so we wanna see, okay, what kinda curriculum things that we have there, that we've lost kids from checkpoint one, two and three? So remember, the checkpoints reflect what was taught the previous quarter. So if we were really strong quarter one, and there, we saw a lot of kids drop in quarter two, we know we've gotta go back and hit some of those tiers differently, or hit them again from checkpoint two. So those are, those are kinda things that come hot, that are highlighted through some of those checkpoints, and through our data means. Another game, you know, where we anchor down and rise up. You know, we find out what students need, and we give it to them right there. Uh, math, you kinda see, right near sixth grade, they killed it. There, they had ninety-seven percent of the kids that were at or above on all the checkpoints, nail it on the, on the summit of assessment with at or above. Seventh and eighth grade, kinda reflective of what we saw with those dips. So that warrants further exploration. So looking at high school, so we, we administer a PSAT nine, just to give us as a benchmark of where kids are at in relationship to PSAT in line with SAT. So as we switch over to high school, forget everything you ever heard about K-two in class or I-Learn, cause they're two different tests. There's no really correlation between I-Learn and SAT. Different tests, different types of administration, uh, so we really have to kinda just, think of it as really something different. So we go, so as soon as they get ninth grade, we give it that PSAT nine, and we're like, okay, this is in line with what the SAT is. We can start identifying kids with where their performance at, we can identify curricular gaps, and work with them throughout the time before they get to their junior year and take the SAT. So ninth grade PSAT, uh, forty-six percent that met the benchmark in, in reading and writing. Then when they took the PSAT in tenth grade, uh, we saw a nine percent increase. The state saw eleven percent, but that can be skewed because at the state level, it's an optional to take the PSAT nine. So that's not everybody in the state, whereas this is everybody in the state. So it's good to see that nine percent jump, if you're really gonna, where we're at at the districts. Then looking at math, took a little bit of hit, what a seven percent drop. The state saw a two percent drop. So obviously, you know, meeting with the high school, trying to figure out curriculum-wise, where are these kids at? What can we do? Then we wanna look at comparison, PSAT compared to SAT, right? Cause we start with ninth grade, and we wanna see these kids all the way up to their eleventh grade, we should make sure what we're doing is working. And so if you look at these separately, you look at twenty twenty-two, this is right in between years where the test changed. Where we started seeing adaptive, uh, and the computer model of it, just a change in testing. So these two are really the two years we can look at, but if you look, this is where this group fell at the SAT. So this is where eleventh grade PSAT, we had twenty percent meet the benchmark. When they took the SAT at the end of the year, we had thirty-one percent, which is above the state average by four percent. So as the state only went up one that year, we went up eleven. Two years ago, with, with the first year of that change in testing, we, we dropped two points, but the state dropped three. So we're still above the state average. Uh, looking at last year, you've got twenty-three percent with the PSAT, and then when they took the SAT, twenty-five percent, so we saw an increase of two percent, and the state saw a drop of four. So as the state kinda dropped off from when they took the PSAT to SAT, Chauvinian Central went up. Had it along the same lines of the F O D with I-Learn, here's the comparison with the county. Good representation there. And when you look at schools that are like Chauvinian High School, what are the schools that are similar demographics, we're right at the top. So looking forward, where do we go now? We continue to modify the process of identifying where our students are, and how do we move forward. It's more what's working for others. A lot of those comparisons were to say, okay, these are, these are other school corporations that have similar demographics of our, that we have. They're, they're getting it done, so why are they, we're not, we're not afraid to learn from others. And so I think it's important when we reach out, kinda say, hey, it's good to build that network. Cause we'll learn from them just as much, you know, when I visited schools, or when I came into the school to visit us, I always learned something when a school came to the middle school and visited us. When we went to the middle school, we had good networking, good conversations, just learning from each other. And so just looking beyond our walls of our own building, would help us network and figure out what, what's working for kids, so that way we're helping everybody.
And we, what do, what have we found out that they do differently?
We haven't reached out yet.
Oh, so we haven't done this yet at all?
Nope.
That's probably when we did the breakdown, now we're gonna start doing some visits, doing some conversations, to see what we're missing.
Yes, these scores were released over the summer, we made the comparisons, so now we kinda charge the principals to identify one or two of these places and reach out, and our grants already allowed us to make those visits if necessary.
What we do know is like where the students like are trending in terms of dips, you know, from one
grade to a different.
Exactly, like where we have to put our efforts and our focus in terms of that. But is there a better way to do it, or a better program, or a better method? And that's what we've gotta start moving towards.
And then just stay up to date, you know, where we're kinda, we're walking on quicksand and fighting, fighting in the plains, we're building it with the state. Kinda figuring out what the accountability model is. When they, when they release this accountability model, my idea is they probably know they used last year's data to give us an idea of where everybody fell, when they finally get to that point. But this year, what we do this year is actually gonna be the first year of the accountability model. So whatever they come up with in December, we will be held accountable for at the end of the twenty-five, twenty-six year, using that model. And, you know, as you saw earlier, across the district, there are a lot of things to celebrate. A lot of good wins, I think we can delicate what our students are doing, what our teachers are doing, what our buildings are doing, and pat ourselves on the back for what we're doing as a district, and giving kids to move forward. Any questions?
That's a great way to, to end this, celebrate the wins, and you heard me say it this morning too, some of you, how important that is, and I, I think we do need to, to make sure that's a priority. Mr. Micus, thank you. You have received a lot of information here tonight. As you go through this, you may have questions. That's probably the reason why we do this in a work session format. Going forward, we can continue these conversations. I will tell you, there are a few people I know that are anywhere near as good as Mr. Micus in terms of drilling this down and explaining it. So we give it to you, digest it, if you have questions, let us know. These are living, breathing documents, of course. They'll continue to change, update, et cetera. The big thing I want you to know is, for one, where we are, and, and, and number two, that we are always looking to get better, and what else can we do? And that's part of what we're really gonna start striving to this year, like we talked about, reaching out to others that are like us, see what we're missing, and see what maybe we can do different. Really appreciate also, uh, the meetings Mr. Micus does with principals and teachers. Very helpful, I've sat on quite a few of those. And, and you wanna talk about a way to try to get better, that's how we do it, by him breaking it down for them, and, and showing down to the, the question, well, you know, what, what, what are we missing, what else can we do better? So just a, a lot of, a lot goes into this, it's very detailed. But I greatly appreciate Mr. Micus's effort. Any questions? And I know there will be, but as time goes on, please just let us know, and again, we'll revisit this. Board members have been off for a while, and then we haven't really, we do this about once a year, a big breakdown. But he'll come back sometime in the middle of the year, give us some kinda update. And we'll also let you know more about what we're doing to continue to, to improve, cause I think that's the most important thing. If you have other questions for him, we'll shift our gears a little bit, and move into facility updates. Uh, we have, I'll invite Mrs. Babcock and Mr. Smith to jump in on this as well. As you know, and, and the, the handout I have for you tonight is from Jeff from B and G. And, uh, he was unable to be here tonight, he kinda put this little handout together for you. Um, the first page there is just remind you of our goals, uh, safety of our student staff in buildings at every juncture, be fiscally responsible, um, and so forth. We've gone over those a couple of times already. So really, what we wanna get to is the middle school, and kinda where we are there. Again, Mrs. Babcock, Mr. Smith, feel free to jump in here at any time. You will basically be seeing more of the middle school work start the middle part of this school year. Um, we're gonna really start digging in, uh, I believe it's fourteen classrooms at a time is our goal. And, um, you will see us kinda going wing by wing with the renovation as we start. He's broken down for you the roof project, structural repairs, and then interior renov, interior renovations. And then next meeting in two weeks, we'll bring back to you the guaranteed maximum price of what we're looking at for the middle school project in terms of the interior. We've already done the exterior and the roof, the only thing we have left now to bring to you is the exterior, which will be coming next meeting. So with that being said, the exterior project has started. Mr. Smith, you remember where he said we were on in terms, did he get, did they finish everything?
The bottom layer, yeah. So we got back from Lockbridge's area, back where the metal shop is. We came up the east side of the school and wrapped around to the front, up by the office. So we were able to complete those, and so it's about fifty percent, I would call it over fifty percent.
So the next year of work, we know we started back in June, and, and at times, it seemed like that process was going a little slower than we wanted. Uh, but they did pick it up some here the last few weeks, and we made progress there. So again, right around the start of second semester is when the middle school's gonna really start, uh, an intense renovation process. Now, when I show you, we'll get to Mrs. Babcock's sheet here in a minute on the budget, but just remember, this is broken up into a few different areas here on the budget, and we'll talk about that in a second. I didn't want you to start adding these up and then thinking, well, that's not what we talked about before, cause we'll kinda explain the budget here a little bit. And then the high school, in terms of the high school renovation, we're probably looking at November start for the old weight room area, and then for the locker rooms, it'll start right after spring break. So what our goal is there in terms of locker rooms is to get through the winter sports season, get the spring break, then start the process for those locker rooms with the goal of having that done by time fall sports start in August. Now, ladies and gentlemen, I think we all know, we've been, we've, we've had some timetables that haven't exactly worked out in our favorite times. We're gonna remain optimistic on this. They know we're on a very tight schedule, they will come in and, and, in a very, uh, quick way, pull a lot of resources in to try to make this happen. We will keep you updated, of course, when we get to that point, but those are some concerns early on. Then, um, again, the next page there, he's just going on about the GMP, which again, we'll come back to when we look at Mrs. Babcock's sheet here in a second. High school, again, just kinda summarize, I already covered most of this, I think. Start in November with athletic offices, complete in March, locker room project. Locker room project, project will start in March after the end of basketball season. And then he put in there again, complete by August first. Next page, middle school, new roof cover to begin in September. Classroom, classroom refresh, Christmas break, new security doors, glazing added in the spring and so forth. You can see that the complete refresh of classrooms, the cafeteria, structure repairs, exterior walls started this summer. And about fifty percent completed, and now Mr. Smith, I kind of jumped ahead a little bit there, but I forgot you had that in here. And he said at this time, no, no issues, no additional issues. Those of you, yes, board members, you remember, we caught some things there that we weren't originally expecting. So that's why that's a good thing. And Jeff, last time he was here, mentioned that as they got into the exterior repairs, it was not as bad as they once thought it could have been. So that is positive news. So we're at that point right now, he's calling it a victory. What we're going to end with here, and it really, Mr. Smith really helped push this and then we just kept talking. And Jeff got with Mr. Hall. We were planning on bringing in portable trailers during this process. We got looking at that and as Jeff really got digging into some of the figures, it was going to be quite an amount of money, well over eight hundred thousand, close to a million by the time we did fourteen trailers. Everything it'd take to upgrade those and everything. So Mr. Hall and, and Mr. Smith and Jeff and a bunch of them walked the building. And we're going to do similar to what we did with Loper and Colston, as some of you recall, and do some shifting. We found some empty rooms from time to time in the, in the phases. So that's going to be considerable savings for us in terms of how we're going to do this project, save the sage just south of a million dollars is what we're going to save. So that was huge, especially because as, as we've seen some bids come in, some bids are going to be a little higher, of course, than we once anticipated just because the cost of things are going up. So appreciate everyone's work on that. And that is, as Jeff put in there, that's a victory. Without trailers, we'll be able to, and Mr. Smith and Mrs. Babcock, we're talking, I think he said, ten weeks at a time is our goal for, per phase. So again, as we saw the previous projects, there'll be light in the tunnel. It's going to be inconvenient for a while for everyone. But once you get to that point and they're, they're back in their new classrooms, it'll be a similar structure to what we went through before. So that's basically the update from Jeff. And again, things are moving along. Again, ladies and gentlemen, let's remember, we, we're not on schedule from our original schedule because they discovered some things at the high school in terms of locker rooms with the air system that needed to be replaced. And that kind of put us behind a little bit because of the ordering. So anyway, we wanted to already have this well underway. Nevertheless, we will get it started this school year. And I think that's very exciting. Mrs. Babcock, you want to kind of address your budget sheet a little bit? And why I ask Mrs. Babcock to do is give you a most updated budget sheet on our bond, which covers this whole project and some other things. Now, Mrs. Babcock, let's stop when you get right after the middle school because I want to address that a little bit, if you don't mind.
Sure. Okay, so this budget is just the preliminary budget and it's, it is a moving target a little bit for some of the items, especially the items that are in white. The orange is the cost of issuance, architect, the construction manager. And then I want to touch base on the items in yellow. Those are under the scope of our CMC, which is BG Group. And the, and the rates or the prices that they have listed in the GMP will not align as you'll see the high school, it says six point nine on his presentation, but yet on this sheet I have six point five. And that is because that construction manager piece that is in the orange color, a portion of that is included in on that GMP. So that's why I just wanted to make sure you were understanding that.
Thank you for color coding that. That can be somewhat complicated when we talk about prices. So just remember, some of the orange does go with the yellow. And that's an easy way to, to remember that.
Yes.
And then the one thing I was going to, or are you going to talk about middle school or, okay?
Well, yeah, so the high school's at, and then the four, fourteen point five million for the middle school. And then I'll let Dr. Vance.
In, in terms of transportation, we've kind of put this on hold a little bit just because we wanted to see where our prices were going to come in for the middle school and high school. I really hope next month we can bring you a, a recommendation for some type of a renovation plan. I think that's where we're going to be headed. Lancer's working on drawing some things up. I, I think that our, we feel like our best money will be spent in, in renovating our current facility with the forced building and those lots instead of building new at this point in time due to price increases and so forth. So we're leaving that figure in there for now. That very well could change, could go down, but we'll just see where we are once we're for sure through the GMPs with the high school, middle schools, which we basically are, just to make sure we have enough money to, we want to do the transportation. But again, I hope next month we bring any recommendation on that. And that work could hopefully begin next summer, but we have to be making those decisions pretty soon. So more information to come. I know we've talked about some before, but we really did kind of put that on hold just to see where we are in terms of our budget.
Thank you. And then moving on with the items that are in white, like the roofs, so that was what I had allocated for that. And then next Monday, we will be bringing to you the bid award for that. And so then after that, then I'll reduce that down because it did come in lower. So that was wonderful that our bids came in lower than anticipated, first in a while.
Great news. So while, while Mrs. Babcock, so the roof at Hendrix, of course, is original, so it's time for that to be replaced. Along with, while we're talking about Hendrix, Mr. Smith has some good news, possible good news today. We do feel like no matter what, Wednesday, it'll be able to be driven on. So that's good news. We were kind of worried about that, but it does look like the, Mr. Smith, any other update on the drive at Hendrix that maybe you've gotten recently?
The, the drive at Hendrix, well, they, I talked to Mrs. Tilly today and again, they will be paving again tomorrow and they will have the binder complete. And so we'll be able to start school on Wednesday, go through Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. We're going to come back in on Saturday and lay the one and a half bench layer of finish coating, get that done on Saturday and then hopefully we'll be starting on Sunday-ish, but we leaned on them really hard to push to get this accomplished.
Like we kind of talked earlier, timelines get off and weather plays a factor in these things. And we've had a lot of concern about this, but the bottom line is we do feel confident that we don't need to make any adjustments for Wednesday. It, it can be, it can have vehicles on it, so we feel good about that.
The one item on here that has not been completely done yet or in the process is the LED lighting at the high school. We're still in the works for that. And so that's just an earmarked amount. The parking lot, as I just discussed, that is the, the amount of the bid and came in right at that, although we did have some additional funds, so I'll have to adjust that, increase that amount slightly for some items that need to be addressed during that. The Hendrix HVAC LED lighting is complete, so that is an accurate amount there, final, final amount. And then the additional items is just the remaining funds available out of that original out of budget, total budget for that bond series. One thing that is not included in this, in this paper report for you is that the interest earned, we have been able to expend funds for other things with our interest earned. And so that I do not have listed here for you, but there is, we have been able to do quite a bit with that as well, with purchase of buses, some other additional items that have come up throughout the need as we have, as we always have needs across the district for operational items. So, and that's it. Any questions?
So again, as we've talked many times, our goal, of course, is to stretch this bond as far as we possibly can within our, within our means. But at the same time, we're doing some, some very nice upgrades that need to be done. And as, as I walked around the middle school today, actually, Mrs. Melz and I walked the building, you know, it's, it's, it is definitely time for some upgrades. So we look forward to getting that started this school year. Any questions on any of this that we just covered? And again, we'll continue to talk about this as we go. We'll continue to keep you updated. This is going to be obviously a substantial project, especially come second semester. But I will say this, and Mr. Smith, Mrs. Babcock, feel free to, to say what you wish here too as well. Working with our, our BNG group and Jeff, who you've met a few times, it's been so far a, a very, in, in my opinion, a good process. And I feel very comfortable working with this group. You two want to jump in?
The most, our whole person I've worked with on any project.
And you've worked on a lot of projects. So I guess, I guess that's quite an endorsement. Any questions at all? Thank you all very much, Mr. President. That's all I have tonight. We're ready to move to executive session.
All right, we will close the work session.